...place and obviously the public take their place and we will start it right now. I, okay, thank you. I welcome everyone to a second city council meeting in February. At this time, I will ask everyone to stand for the invocation that will be given by the councilperson Haffa and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Haffa?
I would like us to bow our heads and pray for the men and women in our police department. Yesterday, our emergency task force attended to, attempted to serve a warrant and were fired upon at point-blank range. One of our officers was wounded. Thankfully, he's all right. As you know, physical wounds heal faster than psychological and emotional wounds. Not everyone can be a police officer. Every time they put that uniform on, they are aware of the dangers of their job. Let's say a prayer and give thanks for the protection they provide us. Also, I'd like us to pray for Officer Robert Pumba, Senior. He was, um, he worked for the Allentown Police Reserve for over thirty years. He passed away on February thirteenth. Can we have a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Haffa. Extremely fitting, extremely fitting. At this time, Mr. Hammond, please note that all six, we're down to six, all six city council members are present, um, and we will be filling the vacancy for the seventh position. We will be interviewing on Tuesday, and I'll say a little bit more about it when we get to Good and Well for a New Business. We'll be interviewing Tuesday, February twenty-third, and Wednesday, February twenty-fourth. And after conclusion of the interviews on Wednesday night, February twenty-fourth, we will select our seventh, uh, city council individual. And we had twelve applicants, and we're very, very pleased that we had twelve applicants. At this time, we will do courtesy of the floor. If you're speaking as an individual, obviously, you're speaking for yourself. You have three minutes. If you're speaking for an association, you have five minutes. Mr. Herschman, welcome.
Rural Fire North, Governor's Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania. I was a former member of the city council. When I was on the city council, Julio, what happened? I think, well, we did think we based on legal opinion, on precedent. I think what happened here, like denying my application yesterday for city council agency based on the fact that I was not a Democrat on the panel for more than thirty days. You know, when you put that out in the newspaper, in that ad, public knowledge for newspaper, nothing is noted in that newspaper how long you have to be a Democrat. So I think, number one, this is misleading. I think you misled, it could have been maybe more than sixteen applicants for this position. I asked for your, the opinion from the solicitor's office on how she decided that, uh, it has to be thirty days. She won't give it to me. Did she give it to you guys in writing? If she gave it to you guys in writing, I think you should share it with the public. I think that's a public record, because you based your, your opinion on this.
Mr. Herschman, that is, that is attorney-client privilege.
That is what?
That is attorney-client privilege. That is shared.
I understand that, but she spoke at a public meeting, and, and, and since she spoke on a public meeting, it becomes a public opinion also. I mean, you should, you should share it with the public, and you have never done that. It's, and then, and then you put an ad in the paper saying, "Send application and pursue the charter of council rules." What are they? I think you should let the public know what the council rules are or what the charter rules are. You have a member of the city council that put an application in, uh, uh, for, for a position on city council, and if you heard him, he, he appeared to front his body, and he was only a Democrat for two days, but you allow him to speak, but you don't allow a person that's been Democrat twenty-some days to speak. I mean, is this the way to run government? Different rules for different people. I mean, it's not fair, Mr. President. You have to be fair to your people. This is about Allentown, we're going tax per just like you guys, you know. I think, I think what you should do is open this thing up to the public and some other Democrats, like the gentleman that was, that applied her decision for two, two days as a Democrat, you allowed him, and this solicitor should at least publicly provide information to the public. I mean, she, if she released it publicly, give it to the public. I mean, she should have put it here and said, "Here's, here's my, my opinion." And if it, if it's a client privilege like you guys said, I know what a client privilege is, Mr. President, did she base it on precedent? If she didn't base it on precedent, it's, it's really not enough to, an opinion that you should keep public, uh, private. She did, and it's her opinion. Seven of you people could have your own opinion. This solicitor could have a different opinion. All sixes could have a different opinion. I mean, if it's not based on precedent, when I was on the city council, we based opinions on precedent. Anybody that's heard on, I mean, on the legal staff here, gave an opinion that was based on precedent. She did not tell you if this was based on previous, previous legal precedent. And that's not the way to operate government. We're, we're a city of, we got, you guys passed laws, and you based, you just passed a law, and you based it on either third high city law, or, or the officer charter law, or a state law. But here, you use a, I think it's a violation of the people's right to what you have done. And I think it's unfair, Mr. President, to what you have done to the public. You turned four of us down, I don't know the other few gentlemen, but it's not right. I know I'm a sheriff of the city council, and Julio was on the city council. We never accept an opinion without precedent. Is this an opinion of, of the person who was sitting there? You can have an opinion, they all can have an opinion, all these can have an opinion, Ms. Haffa could have an opinion. But it's, is it legal opinion? No. So, Mr. Chairman, it's unfair. So, as the rule's going to stay, thirty days or two days, as it was before. Because if, if the ordinance doesn't read thirty days, you know that. There's an ordinance, the seat of Allen says, "You have to be a Democrat in three days." It only says you have to be a member of the party when you file for the application or deposition. So that's, that's the law. You guys make up laws, not the law. I mean, you make up a, a ruling that's not based on any precedent or law. And I hope that you, to allow the four people that were turned down, not an opportunity to, to appear as far as the city council for a vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herschman. One, one second, please.
Mr. Herschman?
Mr. Herschman, our assistant solicitor, Shawna, will?
You are welcome to challenge our position, our opinion by declaratory relief if you wanted to file something in a court of honor.
I know I did. I've been, I've been city council. I know what people can do and what rights people have in Allentown. But for me, it cost me money, and these guys have caused the money, right? I understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Herschman. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
I, good evening, all you, including me faces. Personally, I lived in New Hampshire for a few years. I have no love for politics. My reason for being here is, I talked to, um, Mr. Hanlon regarding, this spring, I would like to play my guitar on public space in Allentown. Is this legal? I do not want to get arrested for, uh, drawing something or doing some kind of art on public space in Allentown. I've lived in Cambridge, Mass. I'm, I'm half-New English, and, uh, I lived in Cambridge, Mass, and there's artists everywhere. And I believe that brings some kind of solace to the people to have street artists. Now, we all heard the story about the guy who sings. I'm not a big fan personally. He can't sing that well, in my opinion.
I can't? I don't know. I've got a recording contract. I hate to tell you.
He's in the audience.
I'll see you afterwards.
This is not the Republican debate.
I'm not, but you know what? When he does sing, he brings a smile to the people's face around him.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, man. You know, I'm, I'm not into fifties, so, I mean, but, at the end of the day, I think that free art expression should be somehow provided, whether we get a permit or do something, we all know what happened to this man. And I saw the video, I thought it was horrible, and I'm on his side. I sing with him, because you know what? I like him. And he brings a smile to Allentown's face. So therefore, what I'm asking is, what is the rules for me to put out my artwork, play my guitar, do artistic things in the city of Allentown in public space, and where can I do it? And that's all I have, and thank you for your.
And we'll, and we'll get you an answer, Mr. Hanlon. Let's, let's check with the, uh, you know, the, this, this permits department, and, um, Mr. Hanlon can talk to Mr. Dockley. We'll get you an answer, absolutely.
And if the singing guy really is in the audience, I do like some of the stuff he's singing. I enjoy.
Maybe the hook up. He plays guitar if Jim could sing.
I'm bound.
That'd be good.
Okay.
It's totally different, by the way.
We will, we will get you an answer.
All right.
There's a, there's a protocol, and we'll get you an answer.
I do appreciate it. Hopefully by spring.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Pearson.
Dennis Pearson, nine forty-two East Tillman Street, East Allentown Ritterville Neighborhood Association President.
You want five minutes?
Yes.
Give me five minutes.
I may not use it all, but.
Well, give me five minutes. You're, you're representing that group.
We express sadness over the death of a young woman in our neighborhood, just down the street from my home. We express sadness that a police officer was shot. But you know what? We are concerned what the federal government is allowing to happen to our neighborhood, especially in our apartment building. That building in which that individual lived was built in the nineteen eighties only for senior citizens, not Section Eight people. Now, there are senior citizens that are poor, but it was built for senior citizens. And I should know. Mayor Joe DeDonat was infuriated, and so was Kirk, Kirkor. Because I was the first person in Allentown to learn from HUD that those houses on Gofford Street were going to be not low-income. That's what the, that's what the DeDonat administration wanted. And at that time, Eastside had a real affinity to low-income houses, houses, because they always want to put them over here. We fought back Central Park, we fought back other stuff, and now they want to put it there. So we fought back, and we got senior citizen housing. It's no longer senior citizen housing, and that area is no longer a good apartment area. Just Monday before, in delivering my neighborhood newsletters, I went by the first apartment building on Gofford Street and noticed on the window, on the door, a constable has posted a notice that one individual in that building was subject to arrest. That's not the building that they found the other guy. So, so it tells me there's an element of crime in those buildings, so close to Derifai School, so close to the park, and so close to the Valley Youth Housing that has, has, has been done on East Tillman Street. There was a private housing firm there, and it was bought by Valley Youth Housing. So now youngsters who had trouble with their parents are actually emancipated and lived at that apartment building on East Tillman Street. We want this area kept and maintained clean. We do not want to fall into the kinds of fears that have set our city in some areas. That is our opinion. And that's where I'll stop now, and won't go into anything else, because I must leave.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Appreciate your comments. Miss Man, welcome.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Reece Amelendez, and I live at two forty-two Bridge Avenue. Um, I'm pretty nervous, but I'm gonna say what I came here to say. Um, and I'm gonna re, I was shocked to hear that this council brought a unanimous resolution against Mayor Balowski demanding his resignation. According to this council, an FBI investigation of City Hall has rendered the mayor, and I quote, "a detriment to the well-being of the city, its residents, and city employees." I found, I found these words pretty surprising, because in spite of the investigation, in my view, life continues forward in Allentown. In fact, progress continues its march in Allentown under the mayor's leadership. As far as I know, under the mayor's leadership, the city of Allentown is being beautifully transformed right before the residents' own eyes. Therefore, the investigation has not rendered the mayor ineffective at all. He seems to be in good spirits, continuing full force the progressive path that his administration has taken. Now, let's take a look at Ms. Clinton, Hillary Clinton, who's running for president of the United States, and is being investigated by the FBI and the State Department. Is she being seen as a detriment to the well-being of the United States to any of you? She shouldn't be, because like the mayor, she hasn't been accused of any wrongdoing yet. Until then, they both should be respected in their endeavors, since they have the Fifth and Fourteen Amendments behind them. This due process mentioned in these two amendments includes being accused of a crime before anything else. What this council has done with this resolution is to make itself judge, jury, and executioner of Mayor Balowski, which is clearly a violation of the Fifth and Fourteen Amendments of the Constitution of the United States of America. Now, let's go to the Bible, my favorite book. Jesus said that whoever is free from sin to throw the first stone is any of us without sin. For my part, the answer is no. The Bible also states to treat others like you like to be treated. If any of you wear Major Balowski shoes, would you like to be treated the way you have treated him, without waiting for the process to be over? Unless you're the Supreme's parry, you don't know what happened here. You might believe, but you don't know. So until then, I urge the council to continue working with the major, supporting him in the good work he's doing for Allentown. Let the due process take its course. This is a constitutional country, and the Constitution supersedes all the laws of the land. It's a supreme law that protects, among other things, the rights of men and women of this country, and it provides due process. Please remember, a person is innocent until proven guilty, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shepherd, please. Can't have a trigger, seven thirty-three, North Lovett Street, and, uh, representative of Allentown Tenant Association. I was, I've thought of it good, and I'm gonna help from there. These ice storm, I think it was like Thursday morning, there was a bunch of ice messes, or Tuesday morning. Anyway, it's one big, the first one out, and maybe a lot of people didn't see, because the person's not well-known. An officer, Christopher Hendricks, was driving down Seventh Street, apparently saw a couple elderly people who were slipping and sliding, because it was an absolute sheet of ice at five thirty in the morning. He picked these people up, took them down to Atlanta Bus Station, got each one of them out of the car, into the bus station, and they actually sat there apparently until their bus got there. Somebody else helped them get out, but, you know, I'd like to see the guy, you know, somebody saying, "Thank you very much," you know? A lot of people see all the crappy stuff out there, so. Now I'm gonna get into, uh, Sea Town, which also owns Seventh Street's Little Apple. We've been going, I've been bringing this to you now since last year. This is almost a full year. The place is pathetic. It really, really is. Go by there tonight.
Where, where, what are you talking, what's happening?
The Sea Town, at Fort, Seven Street, Little Apple, is owned by Sea Town. Both are dumps. Both of them. At least Little Apple has emptied its dumpsters within the last couple of days. They have two major dumpsters that are overflowing, and they're infested in the neighborhood, which is the Tenth Ward North. What I'm reading now is directly from Brandon Wonder of the Alternative Gallery. We are located directly across the street from Sea Town, inside the cigar factory at Port of Tillman, and we are constantly dealing with the trash and dumping issues that go on from Sea Town. We clean up after them and their customers all the time, and I often find used syringes, drug bags, all over their property. We have children that come into our building for classes and events, and that's the exact thing we're trying to keep them from seeing. We have organized, along with downtown tenant association, Tenth Ward North Neighborhood Association, block cleanup parties, and have invited them to part of this, since most of the trash comes from them and their customers. The, who are the contributors of the trash around there, we are always ignored. But we still go, and we still consistently clean up their property, including their parking lot, and alongside their building on Fourth Street, as well as Warner Street, which is the out, the next road over between, uh, Tillman and, uh... They have no consideration of the neighborhood, the residents, and the businesses, or the visitors that come to this area. We have even offered to repaint the side of their building with a beautiful mural for free, since society's in a very rough shape. We took the time to put together an official proposal on how this would benefit both him, us, and the neighborhood as well, only to be ignored. Since there's only, they're the only grocery store in this part of town, they have no competition, they do very, very well, which they do. That place is packed at all times. Since they do so well, though, they apparently do care less about the state of their building, since it hasn't been kept, has not kept the visitors away. As far as the rats, they're not only coming, this is coming from a previous comment, I've already seen them out there. I have also. Even after all this, we still try to support them by shopping there and sending customers their way. They are the only grocery store in this area. I've personally been trying for over two years to deal with this issue, and it's absolutely gotten me nowhere. I want to work with my neighbors, we want to help rejuvenate this section of the city which has been lost. Time is take, time to take bigger actions, though, and be of great interest to the attention of yourself. Now, honestly, I believe that part of the problem also, not just being Sea Town, who knows that these people are stuck walking there. There's nowhere else to go when you're on the Tenth Ward. Where else would you go? Walk Old Light Hall? Walk across three separate bridges to get all the airport road? You got Supremo Gap, that's about five hundred blocks over. This serves the community, they know that, they know there's nowhere else for anybody to go. Now, you know, in two thousand seven October, we, we started the, uh, a planned essential city initiative. That was the first plan the city decided to undergo to revitalize down here. This was the first plan to also leave both the Eighth and Tenth Wards out of the plan. We'll get to you. Allentown twenty twenty, two thousand nine January, same thing. We'll get to you. Center City Initiative, two thousand fourteen, now upside Allentown, again, we'll get to you when this runs its course. When this runs its course, it's supposed to be six years. That's two thousand twenty. Thirteen years. These two sections can't wait any longer. The Eighth Ward has got a blighted property issue. Other issues are lower there. The Tenth Ward is a trash-infested mess. It is why we created the Tenth Ward North Neighborhood Association, to address problems even closer to that. We have owners there, not just the Alternative Gallery, but the Rat Pack and a couple others, that want to see the neighborhood better. Sea Town is a major detriment to this area. It is a major cause of trash and filth, and I welcome any of you, if you've got kids, if you've got Facebook, or you're on Facebook, look at my page, the tenant page, or the suite page, and look at the hundreds of comments from the residents who are sick and tired of it, but guess what? A lot of the residents say the same thing. There's nowhere else for me to go. And that is wrong. They're holding the people, they're literally hostage. Thank you.
And we'll get on that tomorrow. Mr. Dockley can get Mr. Harper out there from the suite, uh, suite division. I see Mr. Solomon can say, and Mr. Harper make that new number one priority tomorrow at Sea Town. Have you had it? And we'll get on that tomorrow, Mr. Shepherd, first thing. And report back to Mr. Hanlon, so Mr. Hanlon can give all city council members a report, and we can push, push that out to Mr. Shepherd right here.
Pass these on, please. Okay. Like the good old teacher I have been over thirty years, and you know that, I'm gonna pass some information, okay, so they have it. Always preparation, big P. Obviously, there's a lack of, my name is Jim Oaks, four oh four, Seventh Street, Allentown, PA. I hate microphones. I don't need one, actually. You know that. Okay, all you people know who I am. I'm a former, uh, United States Army Military Officer, officer, and I also served in the United States Marine Corps as a medical corpsman. Obviously, there's a lack of leadership here, and we have a lame duck mayor right now. Uh, it's gonna be apparent that, um, he is gonna get indicted. The FBI wouldn't be doing what they're doing right now. Okay, I've worked with the FBI conditioning them and stuff for years, and they would be putting their hands and their fingers into something unless he's gonna get indicted. In all respects to the, the, the woman out here, I'm sorry, but he's a goner. My question is, Mr. President, are you gonna be, you're gonna be the first man, okay, that's gonna be the mayor, are you gonna be accepting that responsibility? I hope so. One thing I, I, I don't like right now is, this is like a, I don't know, being a military officer, I was, it's like a total dictatorship here. There's not anyone like a Jeanette Echewall here, that will stand up for the people, by the people, to the people, okay? And all you, mostly, the majority of you people are Balowski supporters, and yet you have no confidence vote. It's like, what the heck's going on? How do you do, how do you conduct business, okay, right now, with the situation that you have? Obviously, there's been a lot of controversy, okay, with, uh, what happened to me, and, uh, I want to make it clear, I'm not anti-cap. Matter of fact, I have, uh, been meeting with now Assistant Chief Glenn Doherty for about like once a month right now, and we're going over a lot of things. However, um, good police officers are worth their weight in gold, and there are many officers like that in Allentown, and I, I like a lot of them, but there's seven of them, I call them the Allentown Seven, that will be terminated. And if you, you are the guardians, okay, of the police force, on the contrary, Chief McLean, okay, this is not, uh, a, a matter that a judge fores, okay? You are the guardians. You are responsible for, uh, the, uh, conduct of the police officers, and especially with two former Allentown police officers here. I would hope you would do that. I have met with, uh, another former Allentown police officer, who is, uh, now the chief detective, Mike Miller, and he agrees with me, okay? And he even saw that tape, okay? And he can't believe, he can't fathom, you know, why, all right, there has not been justice done, all right? Our, your, our, uh, chief of police right now, Keith Morris, was the head of the Professional Standards Committee, along with Sergeant Paul Sporling. They said that Officer Bush had did nothing wrong. It was completely unfounded, but six million views on YouTube, and it's unbelievable. Anyway, by now, you've seen the video, and you know what happened. It speaks for itself. And I, I like, uh, I'm a philosopher kind of a guy, and Plato asks in the Republic, "Who shall guard the guardians?" In Allentown, this is your job. This is your job, all right? It's not for some judge to decide. You've gotta make sure that these policemen are held accountable for their actions. Now, Jeanette, one more thing. Jeanette Echewall promised me that she would make sure that the police force would have one hundred hours of training, okay, in how to properly handle possible detainees and apprehended entities, okay, uh, around topsail suspects. Has, who is in charge of the safety committee right now?
Mr. Hendricks is the chair of the safety.
Okay, that is your responsibility, Captain Hendricks, to do this, okay? I expect you to do the job. And one of your, uh, I remember you said that one of your things was to help protect the police force, but also help the interests of the community, as far as the police force is concerned, too. This is your responsibility, and the citizens expect you to do that.
Sir, you know, make, make your final statement.
Okay. In my final statement, all right? It's, it's your job, you're the guardians, and I'm, I'm here to remind you that citizens of Allentown expect this of you.
Uh, sir, just for public record, do you have, and do you have litigation against the city of Allentown?
This doesn't, this doesn't.
Sir, just, just, just through public record.
Yes, it, I, I do.
Do you have litigation against the city of Allentown?
And you know what? If I have to garner, garner sway from those cops, I will. And you know what? If I have to garner, garner wages from those cops, I will. Civil law.
So, Mr. Hanlon, please note that the answer was yes. Thank you.
Good evening. Tessel, 117 West Lobo Street, Allentown. On behalf of the singer, I think if everybody would just abide by the laws, well, listen to the police when they say stop, there wouldn't be all this. I mean, when you get up there and you're carrying on like a maniac. In public, is my opinion. You're looking for the spotlight on YouTube and possibly a lawsuit. I feel it's all self. My opinion.
Afraid not, man.
Thank you. Please, no comments.
Yeah, I'm getting out of here, because otherwise I'm gonna get pissed off.
Goodbye.
And that's not true. I've been going through physical therapy for four months right now.
Just, just ladies, relax.
Well, I'm getting the hell out of here right now. I'm the old Marine, everybody said. Ouro, central fog. Always safe.
Officer, please open the door for him.
Thank you, officer. I appreciate that. And I expect you guys to do what you're supposed to do.
Please leave. Mr. Renner, I, I don't think I would ever say this, but it's very nice to see you, sir. I, oh, come on, Mr. Renner and I are friends. I, I, I came out to run away.
Do I get three minutes or five minutes? I'm part of the Rail Con at West End Civic Association. This counts in my membership. Mr. Renner, if you'd like, you've got three minutes. Thank you. You're welcome. I was just listening to Ken back here, Hepburn Trager. You know, the city is a pigsty. It's, it's amazing how dirty it is. And we have a lot of people living right across the street here. Why can't we employ some of these prisoners to come out here and help them clean the streets? And I'm not saying this eating whatever they are down in the hall. They do a good job. They really do. Yeah, they do a very good job. But we have all this free labor over here. Why don't we utilize them to help clean up these streets? It's filthy.
I think we did check into that at one time, Mr. Dockerty, and I think...
I did mention it.
Yeah, you did mention it to Mr. Dockerty several years ago. And, uh, I don't know if something would...
The county pulled the plug.
It's, oh, the county. So now you have to go to the county, the commissioner's meeting. That's how long a Wednesday also.
I thought you had a lot of pull.
Oh, no. But, uh, no, I'm very seriously, you did ask that several years ago. And I know Mr. Dockerty did get his...
I don't think it's, it's disgusting.
And it got, well, see, it's Lee, no, in all fairness, it's Lee High Comedy Prison. So the Lee High Comedy...
Well, can't we initiate something again and try?
Yeah, we could try. Why not? We'll try. Of course we'll try. Yeah.
Anything to help clean up the city.
And I agree with you. I agree with the totally. I agree with the totally. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I didn't use the five minutes, Mr. O'Connell.
Go over to Mr. Dockerty, please. Hello, Mr. Shulman.
Good evening. 225 North Sixth Street. Three things I just wanted to mention. I myself contemplated applying for city councils. I apologize that I am not doing this at this time, as I do not feel I have the time necessary to give up to this position. I really sympathize with what you're going through. The second thing I wanted to point out is I learned today that there are four, possibly five businesses now that have closed, uh, in the midyear recently. And I can't help but wonder how tied in that would be to the parking rate increase and how expensive it is to park here in Allentown, and how many more businesses may be driven out due to the high cost of parking. But the thing I want to bring to you, to your attention here the most, is something different. Riding around Allentown, walking around, such, I'm noticing that a lot of gas meters are unprotected. Okay? By unprotected, I mean there are no barriers, nothing to stop somebody slamming into one of these with a car. Okay? More often than not, I'm seeing these gas meters all around unprotected. If you like, Mr. O'Connell, I can, uh, send you a short list in the near future of some of the addresses that I'm noticing just downtown here, where these gas meters are unprotected. And it would be something I would ask you to look into.
Yeah, please do, because we'll get our great messenger, our director of public works on that, because most of the new units that are put off, they have to have a barrier around the gas meters.
Right, but this should be, something like this should be considered to be retrofitted to older, uh, older buildings to prevent anything like, say, the, the buildings that blew up on 13th Street four years ago, five years ago. Okay?
Yeah, no, thank you. And if you have a check with Mr. Messenger, you can check with UGI. Hi, Miller. Uh, this is Maris. How are you?
I'm red. Relatos and Alice of Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association, 531 South. I, too, was just about to mention about the gas meters. We recently got a letter saying that, um, the gas commission was supposed to talk to the historic neighborhoods in regards to placing these meters. And what we found is that the homeowners, the ones in the historic area, are not getting the meters. It's the rental, the rental properties that are getting the meters really close to the curb. For example, if you go in the 300 block of North Sixth Street, on the left-hand side, about twenty-four inches from the sidewalk, the house in, it's in the middle of the sidewalk. It literally is in the middle of the sidewalk. It is not towards the property. It's in the middle of the sidewalk. And some of the meters are, uh, when you walk by, you hear them hissing. So you, you're panicked. I tell you, 530, uh, what am I, 533, West Allen, he's called, um, four times, um, the gas company, because his is constantly, um, they put soap on the outside, and his is constantly leaking.
Oh.
Um, so, yeah, and I'm in West Allen, by the way, in 500 block of West Allen. So we have some concerns, because the rental properties are getting meters put up fast, and the homeowners are, that, um, homeowners are not getting told they go to work, when they come back, there's a meter. He did, the 534 did not ask for a, um, to replace. He wanted it inside. They installed it outside, and they installed it four times long. So, uh, this is giving us some concerns. And we were told that we were gonna have a meeting about this, because you're a historic district. I know I'm not Old Allentown. I'm not everybody's favorite, but Old Fairgrounds is a historic district, and we should be treated with the same respect as in Allentown.
Have you contacted UGI? Because I know, I know. A, a lot of the homes are asking, Mr. Hendricks had one. A lot of the, the older homes are asking to take the gas meter out of the basement and put it outside.
They're supposed to be at, but that was one of the things that, prior, I think, two years ago, we were supposed to have a, a public meeting about the placement in the, in the historic district, where the meters, and that never happened, because they're...
There were some meetings, though, too. Some meetings were held outside.
Correct. And, and Old Allentown especially had a meeting, and you had to go to Harrisburg for it. And so there was supposed to be a meeting in Allentown specifically, because West Park is also a historic district. So it's West Park, Old Allentown, and Old Fairgrounds. And I can tell you that from, um, West Park and, and Old Da, and Old Fairgrounds, we have not had anybody come to us and say, "This is where we were." They just put it on. And it's not fair. We should have the same conversations that everybody else is having.
I, I think your complaint would have to probably go to the public utility.
Oh, I already contact PUC. So I'll just keep contacting, but they did tell me that there is a representative in, um, the city of Allentown that they can, you could talk to directly, but that's why I'm asking.
Oh, did they tell you who that representative is? You mean from UGI?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know who that is.
Maybe, guess I'll do it for you.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Yeah, public safety is the same, but we're gonna get that representative.
And I keep sending pictures of the actual meters that...
I'll have, uh, the city person check it out. Mr. Hanlon, you can do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marley.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramos, welcome.
Sorry, I'm 431 North Ninth Street. I wanted to speak about the applicants that were rejected because of the time in party. I believe the solicitor's opinion on this is erroneous, especially because we have a history in the city council when we considered other appointees that we allowed people to switch within a couple days of the deadline and consider their application. When you look at the charter, uh, the charter is silent as far as the timeline of how long someone needs to be in party, um, to be considered an applicant. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we have equal weights and measures. You know, when we were going through the controller questions, you know, we learned through that process that our charter is silent on a swearing provision. And so we've all accepted that, okay, it's silent, so it's not required. The same thing, the charter is silent on how long someone needs to be in party to be considered an applicant. So, um, you know, I believe this is something that's really just pulled out of the air, and you should consider the four applicants that were rejected, and, um, not reject them out, you know, just, uh, because the solicitor says so. Also, you know, I, I wanna ask the question, you know, will this rule change depending on who the solicitor is, and depending on the intentions that people have? You know, if we get another chief that switches parties, are you gonna consider his application even though you've rejected four people here, um, this past week? So I ask you to reject that opinion. I don't think it's based on law. I don't think, you know, it's just pulling out of the air. And I don't believe it's based on our city charter. So, again, we're asking you to abide by our city charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Anyone else to curtsy to the floor? Hello, Mr. Kaminsky.
Good evening, President O'Connell. Mike Kaminsky, 779 Benton Street, Allentown. First of all, uh, big thank you to our police department for the unfortunate event that they had to withstand and deal with. That must have been brutal. And also the good news from, you know, I did see the picture of the elderly couple being picked up, so that was definitely a positive for our city. Ju- ju- just a couple of thoughts. Mr. Hepburn Trager brings up the 8th and 10th Ward constantly, and, you know, it, it doesn't go unnoticed, then, um, at least I hope it doesn't. And I, I myself drove through for the first time a lot in the last week or so, because I've had some things to deal with in that section of town. We should all be embarrassed, city council, our mayor, our residents, for the condition of what that looks like. There are buildings crumbling. There are potholes all over the place. I mean, I, I can't cite, a- and I'm not gonna, you know, be able to cite things like, like Ken can, but here, here's the truth. I- i- it's something that needs to be fixed. And if we can start, start the ball rolling on that, you know, I, I think that'll go further for our city than any tall building that we're gonna put in, in the midsection right now. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's just an embarrassment to the city. Uh, on another note, there's been a resident, I believe the address is 2309 Washington Street, that has had a loose pit bull, uh, out, that animal control has been called several times about. Just this morning, my mom went to take her little dog out, and, you know, she went to go get him, and then all of a sudden, a pit bull came, that same pit bull came running around the corner, and my seventy-five-year-old mother sprinted into a house, you know, a- and...
And, and you're saying that pit bull basically resides at 2309 Washington Street?
Yes, 2309 Washington. That's, that's who we see.
It's not a loose pit bull, or...
It's not, yeah, it's, uh, animal control has been called by several residents, so I'm sure it's on record somewhere. But, but, but it's been a, it's been a problem, and my concern is, I'd already been there at 3:30 in the afternoon, when there are kids walking home from Yonberg Elementary School, and here's a very large dog that is not a very happy dog, sitting there, and, and, you know, it's, it's attacked several residents, um, that I know of, and i- it's becoming a quality of life issue uh, in, in that section of town. So I ask that you please, I just want to put on record, if you guys could just please look into that.
Mr. Kaminsky, if you would. Tom Harper is over there.
He was shaking, he said, when he said that, uh, the gentleman with the blue shirt behind Mr. Dockerty.
Give him the information, and you can follow him.
Thank you.
No, you're very welcome, Mr. Kaminsky. Mr. Ramos, welcome. Good to see you.
My name's Tim Ramos. I live in Amherst, 7th and Seventh Streets. I just wanted to say, as far as, uh, to our community, as far as, uh, the issue of the garbage, I think Ken, he posted, uh, he made a post today talking about, yeah, I guess he went out and, uh, took a bag and started picking up some garbage, and dropped it close to his house or, you know, in the vicinity of it. And he said, uh, that there was a young man sitting on his steps and just witnessing him for about fifteen minutes. Ken was just watching him. Okay, he got up, and I say kid, but this guy could have been in his twenties, you know, thirties, who knows? He got up, went inside, got his own garbage bag, came out, started cleaning his front and his neighbor's front. I actually, I live in the 10th Ward, so a couple of weeks ago, Ken invited me to a, a meeting. That was my first time going, and which was great, because I was already considering, I, I didn't know about it, so I was already considering starting my own. And I, I encouraged them that day, and I continue to do so, that if we could create within our community a sense of ownership, the way we used to have, to encourage in our, in our neighbors, have a sense of pride and ownership for your neighborhood. This is your neighborhood. And if we can all do that together, I know you guys are doing many things, and I'm mostly speaking to the people behind me, and I'm in agreement with Ken, and encouraging him, uh, because I've already started to reach out to my neighbors and kind of trying to build a team of people who are willing to come out and help out and just clean our neighborhood. It's very simple. You see trash, you pick it up, and deal with your property. If we get everyone to deal with their own property, wouldn't that be a great thing, because it'd be easy? So that was just one thing. I just, uh, wanted to encourage Ken on that, and the rest of our community aside of that. I know yous have started, or are in the process of starting an initiative to bring, uh, city workers to live in, within city limits. And it, it was something that we talked about at the meeting, was about, uh, issues with, with police. I know across the country, all police are bad now, right? I don't agree with that, because I have at least seven friends who are police officers here in the city, and they're great policemen, and they're great people, very just great, great to know. And I know they do their job with great diligence and great respect for the community. But, um, I just wanted to ask, uh, when I was a kid, we had community police, and I know we have, uh, you know, half our police force, or a third of them retired some years ago, so I know we're still dealing with that. But is there any, uh, I guess, leeway that we can have an understanding, when we could have, kind of, reestablish something like that, community police? I mean, I knew Officer John. Everybody knew Officer John, and, and Sam Bayford, and we all knew Officer John.
Officer John, and Officer Ortiz, right, from the Texas Division, yeah.
So, yeah, just my question, uh, you know...
It's a good question. I mean, former chief.
I'll, I'll answer that. Unlike years ago, we had specific officers in a specific neighborhood, today, community police includes every officer.
Yes.
In every neighborhood, no matter where they work. And that's the level, and that's what we instill in officers. So there's no one specific to a certain neighborhood. They all, generally, they work the same neighborhoods. But we encourage them all to be involved in their communities.
Yeah, okay.
So instead of what you have was a specific number of maybe ten community police officers, now you have two hundred and twenty-two of them, full force of the police department.
And I just remembered, and I think it's a great thing, because people will remember that guy. I remember I was being, not that one, some, I was probably like eleven, I was, I don't know what I was doing. But I remember Officer John walked up and said, "If you don't want me to call your mother..." I was like, "Going home?"
We remember those days. We lived those days.
Absolutely.
Officer Johns, Officer Ortiz.
Yeah.
You know, made sure that all the Texas kids got home safely and to school safely. They knew you, you knew them, they knew your mom and dad.
And you knew his principal, not anybody else.
Absolutely. That man had no problem going, "This is Ramos."
Yeah, "I'll call your mom." And that's all you, all I had to do was pick up the phone.
Yep.
No, but you, you made excellent comments. And you're right, if it, you know, if the mentality, if everyone would take care of their own property, it would be a clean city, but it's not there, and we know that, so... But to work, uh, Mr. Hepburn Trager, we got, we got to work to, uh, you know, to our P people to get out to Sea Town more and, and check it out.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you know what? No matter what, no matter what your priorities as a politician at the local, state, or federal level, it's the quality of life issues that always rise to the top.
Absolutely.
Those are the ones that rise to the top. And sometimes they're the most difficult to handle.
Yeah.
But, uh, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Ramos. Always good seeing you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else curious to the floor? Seeing none. Mr. Hanlon, approval of minutes by common consent. So moved? Okay. Any old business? Transfers back on that table. We have public notice of all the transfers. They're in the agenda for tonight. Any comments from the colleagues about the transfers? Seeing none. We will move on to communications. We have a presentation tonight, uh, for communications. Uh, Mr. Randy Fay is here to give us an update on the Environmental Advisory Council. And, uh, Randy, I see you as the one member in the audience, Joe Huffman, Environmental Advisory Council. So Randy, the floor is all yours, and we welcome you to give us an update on the EAC.
Well, basically, EAC gave, is gonna be giving you an update on EAC. What I'm here tonight is, I want to talk to you about this issue here of watershed, and why it's so important. The answer right now to this is, is from the EAC's council, is make up a watershed. Would there, would, the water comes from clouds, works its way down, gets into the soil, works its way into the ocean. Now, why is that so important? All right. In Pennsylvania, we have six major watersheds. In Pennsylvania, we have six major watersheds. We're in the Delaware, which you can see at the end there, it's a light brown, Susquehanna, and then Potomac, and Ohio, and the Chesapeake Basin. Now, what we're going to see here is, in Pennsylvania, there are 83,000 roughly miles of rivers and streams, 39,000 lakes. Average precipitation per year throughout the state is 42 inches. Amount of water used in the state per day is 4 billion gallons. Now, what does that mean to you? Because of something that has happened with the Federal Clean Water Act, 1972, basically, we're starting to look at ways to keep water cleaner. And if you see in the Chesapeake, it's all kind of really started for the Chesapeake Bay, because they found that the Chesapeake Bay was starting to be polluted by basically fertilizers, and life in the Chesapeake Bay was diminishing. So they came up with some rules and regulations to try and stop this. And if you look on the money, on the bottom there, it said monies are being used to clean or lower sediment, chemicals, excess nutrients, and other pollutants, infiltrate the watershed, the new ideas in educational culture and municipalities. And I want to bring in the point of municipalities. Now, why is this so important and why am I here tonight? As an EAC member, as a Penn State Watershed steward, I'm here for two reasons. What is so important? 71% of the earth's water is covered by water. 2.7% of this water is actually freshwater. One half of 1% of that 2.7 is actually, can be used for consumption. Now, when you think of all the water out there, that's not a lot of water, is it? Okay, what happened now is, the EPA came up with this MS4, which is Municipal Separate Storm Systems, and I've talked to your people here already, and what they found out is, is that water that is going down the drain goes to be treated. Water that goes into the street watershed is going right into rivers. And that's the way the system works in Allentown, which is not unusual, there's a lot of places like that. But what does that make, why is that a real problem? Is we have point sourcing, where you might have cars leaking something, and that gets into that water, and that goes into a stream. Now, you're not going to stop all of this, but there's ways that we can help this system, and ways that we can control water to filter it before it gets to that stream. All right. Because of the amount of, amount of basically hard surfaces that we are continuing to get, and which Allentown has a high density of hard surfaces, as you can see there, one inch of rain in a 24-hour period, or more than 35% from storms, three inches or more, if we put this all into perspective, and if we look at even just down in Cedar Beach area, we're starting to see more and more of this. Now, how much pollution do you think is rain brought into that river that you're seeing up in the upper corner, with this in mind? All right? Okay. Next one, please. All right. One of the solutions that might be kind of instrumental in Allentown, especially cities, is that we start on green roofs. Those green roofs will stop a lot of the water retention, and will hold water for a period of time. It gives cooling effect to the actual buildings, so that saves in energy costs. In some places, they actually grow crops up there. So it would be something that the city could think about in their ordinances and planning commission, that might be something in, down the road, we can say, hey, when we put up a new building, how about if we look at something like this to be added in an ordinance? Green roofs can be aesthetic as well as functional, and here you see, they actually have chairs out there to be, you know, part of a landscape scene, which if you look at crime, they say the greener the place, the more calm people get, so here is a good place they might find it. As you can see, the aesthetics on the one on the left, I mean, to me, I'd rather see that than a brick wall. Okay, now, porous paving, here's another one. Water infiltrates through this and gets into the, actually, the groundwater, which is where we want the reserves to go, rather than that quick flush. If that was an entire asphalt, you know, paver, pavement, all that water would be running into the water, to the streams, rather than these locations, water will run through there, get into the actual soil system, and stay around for a longer period of time. Why is that important? I showed you that picture of the flooded area. If more of this would go on. Now, porous asphalt, if you can see how it's put in, what they found out is, is anywhere between 9 to 18% more expensive than regular asphalt to put in. But the amount that it saves as far as having water infiltration into the system again, rather than that first flush, you can see on the left of that, how much of that water is going to stand, go right into your water system, and out into the, out into your rivers. On the right, it's going down into the soils, it's staying there, it's lowering that first, what they call first flush, in other words, that first hard rain, a lot of that water is staying on site. So we're actually keeping water. Now, with this in mind, on water retention, you can look at parking lots, if there is like, or an ordinance that comes through, or something like that later on, that you can see where you would put water retention barriers. On the one side, you actually see where water, I mean, that's a cutout view in the middle, and that is actually a parking lot. But the water from that parking lot goes into that retention, stays in that area, and then either can be filtered back out and used, or it will be dispersed back into the environment at a lot slower rate. Same way with the one on the right, you can see that these are basically like a rain garden type thing, that would hold water, you can see it coming in, on that blue line, it comes in from the curb, it gets into these aces, and now something like this could be put on streets to hold water, so you don't get that first flush. Okay, we have water gardens, it's very common, perceived a lot of these water gardens, you can see the amount of water that is being retained there, but it will slowly go back into the, into the environment. The one on the left-hand side, that's actually a school, and that was a project done by the school, to kind of show an environmental, environmental issues of water, and also the plant material that was there. Water gardens, here's another one. Now, I said they can be aesthetic, they can be functional, but if you look at that, that looks like a regular landscape, but yet it's functional. It stops that water from coming down that hill and tearing right into a stream or whatever. So it's a functional thing, it can be done, the cost value on these, it's not that expensive. So, and this could be put in, this could be put in the parks, this could be put into people's houses, areas, roadways, so, okay. Here's another one, rain barrels. So many people have downspouts on their properties. Now, if you have a rain barrel, that's 55 gallons of water right there. Do you think you can wash your car with that? All right, rather than taking tap water, you could wash your car, if you had a garden, you could use that water for a garden. If you had, you know, you wanted to clean your boots off, or whatever, whatever you wanted to use that water for, except for drinking, you don't drink it. But it's usable water, all right? That water would be going downstream somewhere away from your location, so it's not used. You're recycling water, it's going to be wasted anyway. So there it is. Next one. There are different types, I mean, I've seen something like this, where, this was actually a garden center, and they actually put them together, and there's 250 gallons of water right there for them to utilize. Next one, please. Rain barrels. Now, this is one thing that I thought was very interesting, is they actually had rain barrels in communities that kind of had like a little competition of who had the nicest water. So this is something that, like, you know, some of these civic associations in Allentown could be running for themselves. I thought of different, you know, parks could have something like this, Friends of the Parks could have something like this. But, I mean, that's a neat little gesture, but if you figure, if 300 or 400 of those barrels were out there, how much, how much water would be saved by going into the river and just gone away, where it could be utilized? Now, we can get in the trees. Crown cover percentage. This is one of the things for MS4 permitting, it will allow you to save money, so you'll be in compliance with MS4. And right now, it just says University of California, but let me give you, I'm also chairman of the Sheiktree Commission. I mean, we just did a study, we just did a whole, we wanted to see how many, an inventory of the entire city, and basically, street trees I'm talking about. The last inventory was done in 1977. At that point, we had 21,000 trees on the street. This inventory showed that we had less than 11,000. So half of our street trees are gone now. Some of that has been done, and I went through it, but, long story short, a lot of trees came down, and they weren't replanted. All right, the water benefits of trees are tenfold. The amount of water that's retained in just the leaves alone can be up to 50 to 100 gallons. So if that's not running down into, into the, you know, stream somewhere quickly, the trees can utilize it. If the bottom part there, if that tree is, if they use the right kind of material underneath them, that is absorbed into the ground system and is retained a lot longer. All right, repairing buffers. This is usually a very controversial thing to a lot of people, because we're not, you don't mow right up to the edge of the crows, or right up to the edge of the streams. You have actually a buffer system there, where you might have trees, you might have landscape plants, you might have some grasses. Now, some people don't like the grass point, because it's higher, they don't, they think, you know, every animal in the world's hiding in there. Chances are they're not, but it's also an environmental issue, that that, on that first flush, when all that water starts flying down there, that's catching a lot of that debris that's going in there, and I'm talking about bad things. So it's cleaning the water as before it gets into that lake or stream. Okay, what does it do? Wildlife habitat, flood reduction, sediment removal, that's another big point. Nitrogen removal, that's how Chesapeake Bay things started. Bank stability. I started bigger city back in 1982, and I could jump across Cedar Creek. I want you to find a spot on Cedar Creek, where you can jump across, even though I'm a lot older, but if I was a lot younger, I still would make it across. The sediment that's coming out of that stream is dramatic, okay? And then it's also food. Repairing buffers, there's less sediment, it slows that water down, it retains water. Believe it or not, garbage and debris is easier cleaned than that, than it is if it's just going out into the streams. So it gets caught in that outer edge, it can be cleaned up. Next one, please. Why I'm here. I want to let you know that these issues are going to become a mainstay. It's not going to go away, the city has to deal with it, you have over 100,000, so MS4 is definitely in your range. The city will have to come, and requirements are going to have best management practices to adhere to, or fines could result from EAP. One of the best ways that you can use a lot of this is volunteers and groups, if they have the educational interest, and we can utilize these people, that they can do projects, maybe stream vitalization, and I know, I know Friends of the Parks have done a few things already, and, but these are the kind of things that could be done, that is less money to the city, and it also might even help in, if you have a grant, it might be something that can be used towards a grant, your, the city's monies toward it. Next one, please. All right, this is what I'm here for. I'm not going to stand here and say that, you know, it's got to be done, I'm just here and just want to give you the information that it's coming. Federal, state, and local. We need the federal people to do it, to help us, state people to do us, and local, and you're the local ones I'm looking at, so we don't have a negative in this watershed. And this is why you might be asked upon somewhere along the line, either by your administrators, to, you know, favor a contract somewhere or another to help in this issue, or maybe you might have some ordinances that might come towards you that also will help in this issue. All right. Water resources pay are basically taken for granted. If you ask the western states, go out to California, those last couple of years, they ran a three-year drought, they take water very serious that year. We've been very lucky in the Lehigh Valley. Water seems to be an issue we don't have to worry about, but this past summer, if you would have been out by State College, they had a pretty severe drought up there this year. Because of climate changes that are taking place, and I'm going to put the old Chinese proverb, when is the best time to plant a tree? And this is one I've armed 20 years ago. When is the best time to preserve water? Right now. Okay. Okay. All right, I gave you the whats and the whatever belt, so I just want to give you this as information to you, as, as, you know, officials of the city, so you can see that if something comes to you through your administration, or you hear about this MS, or you see these plans, that you're not going to say, hey, this is something they came up with, it's going to be all over. It's not just these people here, it's all over. You know, Salisbury's doing it. If you look on Lancaster, City of Lancaster, if you look on what they're doing online, you'd be surprised. And that's, I'm just going to give you that as an example. Next slide, please. All right. Where does your water shed? And this is, I'm going to ask you if you have any questions.
I have a question. It's a good, you presented us with some good stuff, if you can get that Lancaster stuff to us, maybe to Mike Handlin, you could get to the city council, so, I mean, obviously you're ahead of your time, and, believe me, I didn't know any, a lot of this stuff.
A lot of people don't know this.
But I appreciate that, and with your expertise, but why can you not jump across Cedar Creek now, when you could 15, 20 years ago? Help me out.
Because the amount of sediment and material...
It widens it?
It has widened. It's actually, it used to be deeper, but it's got wider.
So the amount of water might be the same, but it, the sediment underneath, so...
I would say the water increased.
The water increased?
Yeah, because the amount of hard surfaces upstream.
So do you dredge that? Do you dredge, you just let that, just let it go?
More damage dredging than you can just let it take its course.
That will probably would continue to get wider.
If it's planted correctly, where you have material that will hold that sediment, like I said, if you have that buffer, so it will hold, the roots go down, they hold the soil, that reduces the amount of sediment that's removed, it reduces that amount of sediment that's removed on the stream banks. So, I mean, it's a win-win when you have these buffers.
And the buffer zones have been controversial over the years, because people can't go right up in...
I was in the parks, and...
Yeah, you were there.
One of the things that used to be is, you know, they're afraid of ticks, they're afraid of snakes, they're afraid of, I don't know, you name it. The thing about it is, if they know the, the actual benefit to this, if our ways, you know, ticks, hey, you can walk on grass and get ticks, it doesn't have to be high grass, it can be low grass. If it's maintained and right plant materialing, it comes to a lower maintenance value of not mowing the lawn in those areas. It's more of a natural area. The tree value of the string increases, because you could have more aquatic life in that stream, because it's a cooler event in that stream, cooler water. I mean, I can give you 20 more benefits, but, I mean, this is one of the things that is coming down the bike, climate change, and I think if the city starts thinking about this now, maybe when something really starts drastically happening, we can say, hey, we put our ducks in order ahead of time, it's probably a lot cheaper now to do it than later on.
We are doing this now in our parkways, in our park system, correct?
There are, yeah, there's, the buffer zones are being put in there, I mean, there's a lot more, I mean, the Sheiktree Commission is, because of our change in our, in our ordinances, when a tree is removed, one has to go back. So, I mean, we don't have that loss value. Now, what you got to remember, back in the early 80s, we had Dutch animals, we had a lot of elms on Hamilton Street, we lost a lot of those, right down, I know, if you were in Allentown, you'd remember that. Just to give you an example, on the hillside, across from Fountain Pool, the hillside there? We actually, I kept records on that, we took down over 900 elm trees on it, on that hillside. 900 trees were taken off that hillside. Doesn't look like a big area, but a lot... Doesn't look like a big area, but a lot of trees were taken down. And it was because they were dead, they became hazardous coming back out into, you know, into the street or whatever, people walking along here. So that was one thing that happened. And it was just one area. We did Tractor Park, we did, in the parkway, probably three thousand trees easily, just for Dutch elm disease. Mr. Brady, go ahead.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Very supportive. And I know that we, when, when went to, we'll see, they, they did a study and they made a presentation to council about similar team, similar things, but primarily in the parks. And it was a company that came over from out of the area and was planting some, and did through some grass and kind of making Cedar, Cedar Creek Park, Little Rehale Park. So I remembered that, but it kind of stopped. And I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do as council to make sure that we can bring.
Well, this is a good question and our parks, person's not here right now. But I think what could be done in the, in the, for as far as the management, they're having a little harder time because of the issues of, of, you know, people don't like this higher grass or they don't, you know, they don't like, they want to walk right up to the edge. There's different management plans where you could have walk areas to get to the stream.
What we're doing, we do as council. I mean, I know what you, I know what you prefer.
What you can do as council is, and this is what I'm asking is, is that if the parks department has a grant and they need matching money for it, okay, maybe you can say, hey, the benefits of this are going to outweigh something, right? They're going to mean something, okay? So don't take it as it's an environment or what's put under the rug like.
We can protect the environment regardless, so I don't think any of us are going to think that, I mean, most of us would not think that way, but.
Well, I, I'm hoping that, that people are going to start realizing it. I mean, I've been basically in this industry for fifty-odd years and, I mean, I see what's going on a lot of times and, you know, I feel like I'm almost useless on doing things, yet I did as much as I could. I mean, I just got done today, I had a class for Penn State to teach guys how to prune correctly. I was there all day, so I came from there to here.
Are you working really with it, I mean, with the environmental?
I'm, I'm, I'm a member of the envir, E A C, in Allentown here. Like I said, I'm also chairman of the shade tree commission.
But are you working closely with them to kind of sprawl this idea? I mean, I don't, I know you do it, but I don't know where the rest of the members are.
We're kind of assigning different projects to different members, so you might hear from another member on a different project down the road. And then that way, it's not just one person talking, you're going to hear more from E A C as a more broader span. Like I said, if you have any questions to this administration, Mr. Dockery, do you guys have any problems? Penn State, I gave Mike Hanlon, Hanlon, a sheet here from Penn State itself on MS four initiatives that they could utilize. And, you know, he's going to send it out to you people to read how Penn State could help you with MS four. So, I mean, it's, it's something I think is going to be, one of my jobs, basically as a watershed steward, is I'm going to a lot of other councils, not just Allentown, because this is something that is running, I mean, I'm going throughout the state. So this is something I think is very important. I don't get paid for this. I even have to pay for my own parking meter out there.
Your parking lot there, it's a free parking lot.
Any, any other questions for Mr.?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And Cedar Beach, the park that you put in Trump, Trump over, you have been putting shrubbery and, and things there, haven't you, in the past several years? I've noticed there's a lot of growth.
Yeah, there have been efforts to, to replant the area, to make it more suitable as a buffer. One of the problems is, is that because of different changes, administrator and supervisors and everything in the parks department, some things got lost in the shovel. And then actually some of the plants that were there were mowed down.
Yeah, I noticed that, that's what I was going to ask you. You start, you started this and then it stopped and I noticed things, because I have a dog and my dog loves to jump in that water and made problems. But I understand why now. But I did notice they mowed it down. Does the city, do they know not to do this?
I think what would happen, what would have to happen is, is that the city parks department people that would be, would need to be, have more training to, on maintenance of this. I mean, not everybody knows everything. And, you know, I'm going to be one of those persons that I don't know everything. There are a lot of.
It's a communication thing.
It's a, it can be a communication thing. And I, I think that if that would be worked out a little better and maybe some of the people that work there had more training in this issue, would be more capable of handling that a little better.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, I remember being there and then it's been mowed down. Thank you.
Yeah, back in the, I'm going to say the nineties, we did a whole plan and we planted three hundred trees along there. Any tree that you saw along Cedar Beach right now, by the way, I'm planting. We planted like, I don't know, three hundred. And what happened is, is that a gentleman was told to go out with a woods mower, basically it was a high cut mower. And he didn't realize that we had trees there that were three foot high and everything disappeared. It's unfortunate, you know, even supervisors can't be everywhere all the time, you can tell these guys, but sometimes they don't, some can.
That's quite a shame.
Yeah, it is. And I, I'm, I'm, don't tell, don't get me wrong, parks department, in my, my opinion, with the amount of people, they have to do a terrific job. There's no doubt in my mind, you have professionals there. And I think they want to work with the city, they all have capacity. And I think, you know, but in some ways, they got to realize that sometimes they don't know everything and they might need a little training in this area.
Okay, any other questions from Italians?
Yes, have they seen this video?
Yes, what's that?
Have they seen Parks and Rec, have they seen this video?
No, but they're allowed to have it. Mike has it in his computer, so they can look at it anytime they want. You know, you can't sell it. Okay, you can't sell it because that's kind of something you can't do, but anybody can look at it. So you want to look at it, you want to go over it again, ask Mike, he can send it to you.
The chairperson of Parks and Rec will be sure that, you know, they get this video.
I mean, we had a meeting, E A C had a meeting with the water department and we had a meeting with the sewer department and we were talking to them about MS fours and this, and they were very truthful to us, they were, you know, and they thought it would be a good idea to come in front of you with the issue, so you know what's happening. Sometimes, you know, things get lost, nobody knows what's going on. And you're the people that have to make that final decision. You're the mayor, that's, that's where it ends up. So, I mean, hopefully if you have this information, when something comes in front of you, you can say you can deal with it. Don't be afraid to ask questions. There are a lot of people even at Penn State that will help you out on this.
I want to thank you for showing this, this video, so I'll be sure that they have it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faith, I appreciate the presentation.
Mr. President, may I?
Mr. Dockery, yes, sir.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I don't want to, I don't want you being up with the impression that you're working in a vacuum. E A C, which has recharged itself, is working very diligently with the various operating departments of the city, public works included, and Craig has spoken to you many times. There's one concrete example from this presentation, Teddy Berger played a very instrumental part in the, in the tree survey that we were just updated on, for example. The, the issue of the repairing, you, many of you are well familiar with, it is a balancing act. If Rick planted something, you got inundated with phone calls about the aesthetics and about the decline of our parks. We've heard it from Olavinsky many times, who's the biggest advocate of not, of not having repairing buffers. So there's a balance. And sometimes we achieve the balance, sometimes we don't. But, I mean, Rick and his staff were out seven hours today at Penn State. I don't know whether they were the same ones, but it's a constant training for our own folks too, about what best, best practices is. But we are working very closely with the E A C and what we can and cannot do, what we can and cannot afford. And Craig, in some public works committee can update the public works committee chair on what we're doing for MS four. But don't get the impression, especially for new members, that the city plants something and casually takes it out, there's a science to it. And, and they are experts in the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoppie. One other note on the communications, Janet and David Cashel are there. Could you tell us a little bit about the Leonard Buck Award ceremony? David, if you'd come up, debate, the time, how to purchase tickets? Coming up in April, I think, isn't it?
Yes, April twenty. Go ahead, David. David Cashel, president of Malibu Thirty Crime Lodge. I think it's going to be the forty-first year for the Leonard Buck banquet. All the presidents, all the councils in Allentown. We have a banquet once a year, many of yous have attended it, some of yous have been recipients of the awards. We picked a police officer of the year. Each crime lodge group has their own people that have worked hard, get awards. It's open to the public, it's the twenty-first of April. The doors open at five-thirty. Dinner's at six. It's at Fearless Fire Company in South Allentown on Front Street. You can contact myself or my wife and we'll gladly get you tickets. It's twenty-eight dollars per person.
Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
No, you're very welcome. You, you people, individuals, groups do a great job and we need to support you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next item on the agenda, control report, Mr. Glazer, do you have a report?
Just to say that the office is currently working on a contract receivables audit and when that's done and responded to, I'll certainly bring it to council.
Almost two weeks in the position.
And up here every day working hard.
That's good, I'd be delighted to hear that. Mr. Dockery, managing directors are toward, do you have some people with you yesterday?
Thank you, Mr. President. As promised, I have asked Ann and, uh, James, Tom, to give us an update on year-end numbers for 2015 with our sweep data. And with that, I'll hand it off to Ann.
Thank you, good evening, members of council, happy to be here this evening. The sweep program, believe it or not, is ten years old. We started in the weed and seed area as a very proactive enforcement and education program. And, you know, I'm happy to report that we are still going strong, doing proactive work as well as responding to complaints, which I think is a very important component of the program, that we're out there, you know, not just responding, but looking for additional problems when we're in an area and on a block. Trash, unfortunately, as you've heard tonight from courtesy of the floor, is just something that it's, it's always out there, it's always something you have to work on. We have transient neighborhoods and tenants and educating them is a constant effort. Tom's going to elaborate on some of the other barriers and challenges that our sweep officers face in what he does as animal control, as well as the sweep program. But in the neighborhoods, I think we've made great strides over the years and have, I think we do have a cleaner city as a result of our sweep program. And I think with the help of even the volunteers that come out on Earth Day every year, and I believe it was Mr. Ronalds who talked about instilling neighborhood pride and cleaning up, if everybody cleaned up their own property and took care of it, what a clean city would have. We continually try to get that message out as well. And, you know, I think everybody pitching in together to be proud of Allentown is the direction we continue to want to go. Tom's going to elaborate now, he does an outstanding job for our bureau and, you know, I can't thank him enough for the work that he does every day and his staff, with the sweep officers and animal control to do what he does to make our city better.
All right, thank you, I don't know how to follow that, but anyway, basically, a couple of things that I'm going to go over the highlights, summary for two thousand and fifteen. One of the things I did here tonight regarding the eighth and tenth ward areas of the city, just to follow up on that, you know, I, I do deal with Mr. Effin Trager and also the other community groups with the problems in their area. And last year alone, just in the eighth and tenth wards of the city, those were the areas combined that came in with roughly twenty-one hundred sweep tickets. That was one-third of all the sweep tickets that were written in the city. So, you know, the things that Mr. Effin Trager and the other groups come up with out in that area, we do go out and address them. With that said, last year in 2015, we issued six thousand eight hundred seventy-four sweep tickets by six different bureaus in the city for nine thousand thirty-two violations. Approximately right now, we have two hundred and fifteen violation types covering multiple city ordinances. Fourteen hundred and thirty tickets were issued last year for the accumulation or stores of trash, debris, or property. Eleven hundred and sixty-three tickets issued for litter on properties or sidewalks. Last year, the city contractors cut the grass, high weeds at two hundred and eighty properties along with sweep. Also, the police department uses it for several, for the noise ordinance. Last year, they wrote a hundred and six tickets were issued by A P D for amplified sound for motor vehicles, radios, et cetera. And a hundred and one tickets A P D issued for amplified sound coming from properties. Along with that, sweep and the engineering department, we deal with the snow and ice on sidewalks. Last year in 2015, since we had the bad winter early, we issued eight hundred and twenty-two tickets between the two bureaus for ice and snow on sidewalks not being removed. Animal control is also under my guidance and with that, we issued two hundred and seventy-two tickets for unlicensed dogs in the city. And two hundred and eighty-seven tickets were issued for no proof of rabies vaccination for dogs and cats in the city. One side note regarding animal control, today was the first day that we, as a animal control department, had sold our first dog license. We now issue county dog licenses out of the recycling office. And the reason that took place was due to the loss of pet supply plus over in the east side. We felt that it would be a disservice to the residents if the city did not offer the county dog licenses to the county residents, especially the city residents that we deal with day in and day out. With that said, the Main Society is the only other facility in the city limits that does issue county dog licenses. The Lehigh County Office, except at the Hamilton, does not issue dog licenses. All they issue are lifetime and replacement. So the individual yearly license is only issued by us and the Main Society currently in the city. So that's something we started today, we sold our first one, so we're on a roll.
So, so when, let's get to the.
Oh, yeah, we made a whole dollar. We made a dollar a license.
Oh, that's good. Let's, let's, oh, let's get to the, let's get to the revenue.
The dollar.
No, not, today, today you made a dollar.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you know at the end.
Yeah, what did you, what did you, what did you make in 2015? What revenue did you bring into the city?
As far as the sweep ticket payments, roughly two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And for the public, and for the public now age, how much is a sweep ticket?
Twenty-five or a hundred, and there's some escalating.
Escalating, well. Mr. Brady, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm happy to see that you're doing a great job giving tickets anyway, trying to keep our city clean. I mean, thousands of tickets in here, which is honorable because you do the work that the department was about to do in the, in the city. I will go further with that, however, and, and my suggestion will be to try to get something like a property or brewery or something to that extent. And I don't want to call it property, so I want to call it something different. And develop a program where you give awards to people who keep their property clean and that they prosper, that they keep, keep, that they beautify it and, and give them some kind of award, make a big deal, raise a big pool or something, and do it throughout the year, several times a year, I think would be really good to do that. All the surface that you may have in the two hundred and something thousand that you made of tickets probably can take a little bit, a little bit of that to encourage people to keep their properties clean as opposed to always giving a ticket, which is basically, you know, the, the psychologically is, you know, it's cost to get people with, you know, with tickets, but I, I understand the reasons. You know, pockets hurt sometimes. But if we also encourage some other people to look at it, you know, giving some kind of incentive to do the right thing, I think would look at us better as a city and you as a department and also have, build some pride among themselves.
I mean, maybe we can coordinate something with the neighborhood groups.
Yes.
If you're at staff.
Yep, so let's work on that. Yeah, thank you.
Well, Mr. Hendricks, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. How do those numbers compare to the previous year? As far as number of tickets overall and the amount of income that's brought in?
They're roughly, they're close to one another, maybe a 10% difference as far as the number of tickets.
Okay, thank you.
Income's about the same.
Any other comments? Just, anybody over here, just two things. Mr. Heffentrager, and, you know, you come here every week, and, and that's good, and you keep us on our toes with what's happening with the landowners situation and this. It just proves your point, 2,100, 2,100 sweep tickets in the 8th and 10th ward. That's, that's unbelievable, that's one-third of all the total sweep tickets. And obviously, I'll continue to look at that when you bring them, bring these items to our attention. And, and, and Tom, obviously, you're doing a great job. And I know you don't have a whole lot of staff, that I know. You don't have a whole lot of staff, because we could, if you had more staff, we could triple, easily triple, because the problems always outweigh, you know, the solutions for a situation. But Ann, I've said this many times, and Tom, you definitely, you're following your commitment to the city, and you're doing it in an exemplary way, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Remember, wave on the wall, boy, wave on the wall, boy. Tom?
See time.
See time, you got it. It was very nice, and, you know, sometimes, city council and the public, sometimes they look like we're in an adversarial role. We're really not in an adversarial role, okay? And guys like, individuals, people like Mr. Heffentrager, it's good to hear it, you're working on a continuing basis with Mr. Heffentrager. And we're doing the best we can, you know, doing the best we can. You only have so many resources, you only have so many people, could only do so much in a shift, and that's the bottom line.
We're all in this together.
Yeah, we are.
And we urge people to report problems to us.
Yeah.
Mr. President, if I may say, you know, kudo to you guys, because Tom and Ann both, I hear great things, so, you know, somebody gets a ticket and they get upset about it. And you have a way of working with them, that it's really not, you know, punitive, but you're also helping, and sometimes you even write off the ticket, you know, if you see a fit. So I wanna, I thank you for that as well.
Before you said, our goal is compliance, we'd rather have people do the right thing and have a nice property. I mean, I like your idea, we haven't done that in a while, who else would thank you? We'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Dockerty?
Mr. President, I would be remiss if I didn't point out and acknowledge the proactive measure that Tom took with the dog licenses. He did that completely on his own. He worked with finance, he worked with risk management through many hurdles in order to provide our citizens, you know, that, that service, which it would have been more convenient if, you know, if we didn't. So Tom needs to be acknowledged for caring, going the extra mile, and, and using time to get this through the bureaucracy. And he deserves, he deserves to be recognized for that, he did a great job, he did it on his own.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Dockerty, thank you, Mr. Harper. Ann, Mr. Harper, thank you, good evening.
Thank you, Hassan.
All right, we'll continue with our agenda, reports from committees, budget and finance, interim chair, Mr. Green.
Thank you, sir. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, however, we have a meeting scheduled for February 23rd at 6 o'clock PM, and so be here as quick, and we'll be ready before the interviews.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Community development, go right back to Mr. Green as the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also have not met since the last council meeting, however, there is a meeting tomorrow, and that is at... Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
And we will be discussing the whole issue of lead in our city, and lead poisoning, and the level of it, and there will be a presentation in regards to the white paper, and as well as explanations from experts on the field who are gonna be here. So I encourage people to come over and be educated on it, as well as listening to what the city really has done, and what the level of, of lead poisoning that you see, that you saw in the paper, the box recently, what does it really mean for our city and where we are, and what we're doing to prevent lead poisoning of children. So I'll see you tomorrow at 6 o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Human Resources Administration appointments, Ms. Afton.
The committee has not met, and there are no future meetings scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Afton, Parks and Recreation, Ms. Mona.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting. There are no future meetings scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mona, Public Safety, Mr. Hendrix.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met tonight at 6:45 prior to this meeting, at which time a bill was introduced, and will be voted on later this evening.
Thank you, sir, Public Works, Mr. McLean.
No meeting is scheduled as of yet, although I spent some time with Mr. Messinger, but we will be scheduling a meeting shortly, especially since we have a bill coming to meet there.
Thank you, sir, Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations, Strategy, that's my committee. The committee has no business at this time. Appointments, Mr. Hanlon, R. 37.
R. 37 is the appointment of Councilperson Afton to the vacant property review board. Back to the meeting.
Okay, thank you, any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, comments from the public, you making a comment, Mr. Heffentrager?
Always do.
Please take off your hat.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
My hair's long.
That's okay, but just, I'll do courtesy to the people.
Perfect choice, we're happy with this choice. We encourage you to double up the amount of property by after, since it takes a whole year. You know, we take a certain group of them and go through there, like, this seems like this lull, but I mean, obviously, we have not complained of the development authority in the last year and a half, or what about the board? Can I be particular on that challenge? Also, obviously, if you wanna know about any properties, come on us, we've got them all listed.
Thank you, Mr. Heffentrager, yeah, Ms. Afton is moving up to the task, and thank you, Ms. Afton, for doing that. Ms. Mona, that, Mr. Hammond?
Ms. Afton.
Pick a vote for yourself.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrix?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Mona?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell?
Yes. R. 38.
I don't know about these ones.
R. 38 is the appointment of Mr. O'Connell to the police pension fund and the act of management.
Any comments from my colleagues? Mr. Green?
Looking forward to it.
I'm looking, I'm looking forward to it, yes, I am, okay. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Hammond, call a vote.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrix?
Yes.
Mr. McLean? Yes. Ms. Afton?
Yes.
Joe Gollum?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Ordinance or final passage, Bill 4, Mr. Hammond.
Bill 4 amends the general fund budget to provide for supplemental appropriation of $116,087 from FEMA Homeland Security Assistant Grants to the firefighters to provide for wellness and fitness.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Hendrix, that was your Public Safety Committee earlier this evening?
Yes, it was, and motion was made by my colleague, Ms. Afton, and seconded by Mr. McLean, and was unanimously put before the full board for a vote.
Okay, any other comments from my colleagues in council? Any comments from the public on Bill 4? Mr. Hammond, call a vote.
Okay, on Bill 4, Mr. Hendrix?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Mona?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Ms. Afton?
Yes.
And Mr. Green?
Yes.
Resolution for final passage, R. 35.
R. 35, our certificates of appropriateness for working in the historic district and its work at 330 North 9th Street.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public, Mr. Hammond, call a vote.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ms. Mona?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Ms. Afton?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
And Mr. Hendrix?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have six days.
Thank you, sir, ordinance for introduction to refer to committee with public comment prior to referral, Bill 5.
Bill, Bill 5 amends the general fund budget by deleting the position of clerk 2 at 6 AM and adding the position of clerk 3 at 8 AM in the Bureau of Street Maintenance.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues about Bill 5? Comments from the public? We will refer that to Ms. Mona, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Bill 6, Mr. Hanlon.
Bill 6 amends the general fund budget by deleting the position of clerk 2 at 6 AM and adding the position of clerk 3 at 8 AM in the Bureau of Street Maintenance.
Thank you, sir, comments from my colleagues? There are none, comments from the public, seeing none. That bill will go to Mr. McLean, Public Works. Supposed to back me?
Yeah, ready.
Okay, that's Public Works, Mr. McLean, welcome, thank you. Bill 7.
Bill 7 amends the 2016 general fund budget by deleting the position of housing coordinator at 11 AM and adding the position of office manager in the Bureau of Building Standards.
Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public?
So what difference would the office manager do from the housing coordinator? Say that again? What difference is the housing coordinator from the office manager from this chair? Should we completely just wipe her position now, or are we just renaming it all?
No, my understanding is, and I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Mittelkamp, who was taking over that as a person in charge over there. He said what this will do, he saved about $10,000 for the city. And he was able to do both of those duties as that other person had. So it's gonna save money, and he's able to do it without adding that other position.
But make sure you come to the meeting when we discuss it.
All right, Bill 7, I'll go to TDC, Mr. Green.
Thank you, sir.
Bill 8?
Bill 8 amends the 2016 general fund budget by deleting the position of legal administrative assistant at 5 AM and adding the position of executive legal administrative assistant at 7 AM.
Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Bill 8 will go to Human Resource Administration appointments, Ms. Afton.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Bill 9.
Bill 9 amends the general fund budget by deleting the position of executive secretary to the managing director and adding the position of administrative assistant at 9 AM to 7 AM.
So go to 9 AM to 7 AM, okay, any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? That will also go to Human Resource Administration appointments, Ms. Afton.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, again.
Kinda get, kinda get these rookies in line, you know? Only kidding, no darts, no darts. Bill 10, emergency ordinance.
Bill 10 amends the 2016 general fund and the 2016 liquid fuels fund budgets by transferring from the inappropriate balance to the other services charged amounts of both funds to cover the unexpected cost of hiring contractors to assist with snow removal, the amount of $533,131 and $0.50.
So this is, this is to pay the subcontractors that will use for the 32.3 inches of snow. Okay, any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. McLean, refer this to Public Works, cheers, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're very welcome. That was so nice of you, you and me. Bill 11.
Bill 11 applies the vacation of a portion of Fairview Street, starting at the southern 30 feet of Fairview Street to the northeast corner and continuing westerly 152 and 32, 100 feet to the western limit of this subject's recreation.
13 Ward, okay. Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public, Mr. McLean, refer to Public Works, sir.
So we'll be having a meeting.
We will be having a long meeting.
Is it?
Yeah. And just, just so everyone agenda, that's the end of the introduction of the ordinances and bills. Resolution for introduction, R. 36, authorizing administration to lease city-owned real property, real estate property, real estate property, and 1902 Lehigh Street for a sign has been taken off the agenda by the administration. Any new business? Anything for Good and Welfare? Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll move in a second, have a good evening.